Oh.
So can I turn my camera off then? No.
Okay, so we record now.
Too late.
All right. Okay, as we get the meeting ready started, if we have a motion to get started.
Motion to start.
Is it second?
Second. Carla.
All in agreement?
Aye.
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 And there are none opposed, since I think I heard all ayes. Okay. Why don't, Angelica, are you able to put the agenda up?
Oh, yes, let me. Pull that up.
It up on my phone and it went down again. Okay. Hector, you said you have all names, right?
I do.
Okay. All right, great. So we've already completed the roll call. And. So do we have December minutes? I thought I saw some in. Yes.
Um, yes, let me.
An email sent us.
Minutes up.
Do folks have access to the minutes? Do they want, do you need Angelica to put them up? Or do you have access to them? So that we could just review them and then we could have a discussion around whether or not we're ready to approve them or not. What do you prefer? Do you need Angelica to put them up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Angelica.
Let me get my screen back. Just trying to get my screen back. Trying to find my control section. Are you seeing anything on here? Are you seeing me or just the?
We still see the agenda. The agenda is still up.
Okay. Okay, let me get back to. Are you seeing me?
Yep, those are the minutes.
Minutes, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So let me know when you need me to scroll up.
Okay. Thank you. Given that we're at the end of the agenda, the note minutes from the December meeting. Does anybody have any questions, revisions? If there are no revisions or additions or suggestions to the minutes, if we could have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Rochelle. Second, anybody second?
Second.
Carla.
Okay. All in agreement?
Donna, I abstain. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you, Hector. All right. It looks like we're all set with the minutes. They were approved from December's meeting. Thanks, everybody. Angelica, will you be able to put the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We, and Hector, do you see Shonda joined us? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Miss Shonda. Yes, I have her.
Okay.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Okay. All right, there we go. So why do we move on to the new business section? So youth services update, monthly report.
Let's see. Want to start off with our foster care support network? We currently have 10 families and 14 youth enrolled. For last month, we focused on, we did our holiday wreaths for the grand pals. We had that sent out and I got a lot of good response. I got a lot of thank you cards that came in from the grand pals thanking us for our work by creating those holiday wreaths for them. We had our annual family event virtually. And we did a movie night, a virtual movie night as well. That was a good success with the kids being engaged and we deliver personalized movie kits. And we had one in-person event for the month. And it was a girls' day event where we had one of the youth that is specializing in making her own cosmetics. So she actually led a session with other groups, the girls letting them know how to make her lip gloss, lip gloss products. So we're trying to encourage that entrepreneurship with some of the youth and for them to get excited about their passion and teaching others as well. Let's see. For our policing youth group, we had two events last month. We did a family movie night and that was a good success as well. We offered Uber Eats vouchers to the participants as an incentive to get them to log on and make it interactive since we can no longer do our big in-person. So we found another creative way to provide for the families for this family event. And they also did for the last event, their CSI fingerprinting. And we had an end of the year celebration for that fall session. Tiffany, did you want to go over the JR B and some?
Yeah.
Moving to Project 330?
Sure. And for the Bloomfield Policing Youth Family Event, there was actually more than six participants. We actually had a good turnout. We had three of the officers participate with their families. And we had a good turnout with our youth, also with the parents involved. So it was really nice to see that. And we showed Home Alone, which was a hit. So for the sunbeams, that program went well. We ended it with a discussion on resilience and coping with stress. And we had a guest presenter, Dr. Althea Bates, who zoomed in and spoke to the girls. And then we discussed leadership and had a nice little celebration on the last day where we had Domino's delivered and a nice gift bag to all the kids right before the holidays. For that group, we are now recruiting actually for the new winter session, which should be starting next Thursday. So we're looking forward to that. We've been getting good responses so far. I have seven already registered. We were looking at 10, but we decided today to move up the amount to max 15 for the group because we do have six pending on top of the seven that's registered. So I'm looking forward to that. And then, do you want me just do JR B now also?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. JR B had gotten slow, especially with everybody doing distance learning. But within December, I don't know what happened with these kids, but everything seemed to go right back up. We got in five new cases. We currently have four active cases. Three were closed recently. We've had none going to court. One case was referred to Bloomfield Social Youth Services, which is still with me, just not under JR B anymore. We weren't able to have any hearings at the time because most of these cases came in towards the end of the month. I did have two JR B intakes and we currently have two family services cases. With the family services cases, now that they're starting to come in more, Angelica and I were discussing possibly making them into their own separate program versus categorizing it under JR B. So don't be surprised if probably by next month you see it sectioned off differently. And.
Tiffany, can I ask a quick question, Donna? So the five cases that came in, were any of those connected or those were five separate youths involved in?
Five separate youths. But two of them were from one incident and two of them were from another incident.
Okay, that's what I was.
And then one separate. Unfortunately, with the kids being home more now, the cases that are coming in is more like assault to a family member or things like that within the home base versus in the community as much or fighting outside with a neighbor, things like that. So not as much school-based events.
Thank you.
Or our movement on for some, our Project 330 Leadership Group, that group last month, we had them write letters to pen pals. So we have the youth connected with some of the grand pals in the senior services department. So they sent out in December a bag that has some holiday treats in it and some gifts. And in addition to the letter that they wrote, just kind of introducing themselves to their pen pal. So I'm coordinating with Yvette to see if we have a response back for the letters to come in. So we're developing the system where once a month, the kids write a letter to the grand pals to keep them connected. And then they'll send it back to the senior services. And then when we have our next meeting, we'll have the letters distributed and then we write, write back again the next month. So that was our first round. So I'm coordinating with her to see if we got some responses back from this month so we can write again to keep that piece of the program going on as well. We also did with that group holiday wreaths. So they also helped to make some of those wreaths that went out to the grand pals for the senior services department. And the youth are continuing to work on their social campaign. Last month, we talked about them doing an issue on mental health and youth anxiety. And some of the kids also want to focus on child hunger. So what we're trying to put together is individualized video that we have all of the youth describe their passion for their cause and give some awareness tips. So the goal is to make it an informational platform that we can distribute to other youths that are in towns. Hopefully, we can get that posted through like the schools, meeting announcements, just for them to have another way to get a source of information in regards to the mental health piece. That group, we're actually going to continue on with the same participants. We do have a few slots to add maybe one or two kids because we are still keeping to our 10, 10 maximum for the group size total. So we have about one space available because we have staff as well that would have to be in room to count for that 10. For our tribe group, we have, that one is going to start reading. You know, I'm going to save that piece until we get to the end. But for last month, they actually worked on public speaking. They have a check-in, the staff actually checking with the youth, kind of like a mini-case management, just to see how they doing in terms of schooling and if there's any issues that are coming up. And then we had them celebrate with their end of the year celebration as well. And this group is a good turnout, it's five participants. And they, for the most part, every week, they show up weekly to the sessions that we have in person. And then just for some advent stuff that we did, we have our regular KMS meeting that we have for our after-school program grant. We meet weekly for that one to plan in terms of getting that program up and going. And then we had a actually a North Central Collaboration Meeting that is with all the providers that they provide different resources that are available to the community for us to connect to see what's happening around in town. And I actually did have a meeting last month with Principal Ms. Malletti at the high school in terms of trying to incorporate a drug prevention assembly that we can do during the school session to get the kids some information because it's harder to get them after-school hours. So I was working with him last month to have an assembly for during the school hours. So we did actually, we were able to have that happen. He did allow us to use the morning block. So I'm working with the speaker for Courage to Speak Foundation. She's going to give a drug prevention assembly that goes over for the youth to stay, to look for signs and how to prevent them from using drugs and substances. So we have a date planned for February. I'm just waiting for confirmation with the school to see if that, that date still works for them. So I can send out the Zoom link invite and we can coordinate how to have a smooth line transition from presenter in the school and all the stuff that's needed for the grant requirements. There is a pre and post survey that the kids have to fill out. So for me, I'm just working with the school in terms of how to get that information distributed to the students so they can fill that pre-survey out before the presenter presents on February 11. And that block that we're able to use is the morning block from 7:45 to 8:45.
A quick question, is that for Angelica, is that for all the school, the high school, the entire or a separate grade?
So that one is for, I have to confirm with Malletti, how many students? Because I forgot to ask when I was on the call before the winter break, how many students will that first session contain? Yes, I'll confirm. Once I get confirmation, I'll keep you posted on the ages that it's going to cover for that block. And how many students that would be engaged?
I have to assume if it's Mr. Malletti, we're talking about just the high school, right? We're not talking about like Carmen Aries or anything.
Yep, just the high school for this. Yeah, I plan on having another assembly that we can do for a drug prevention for the middle school and an additional one for the high school as well. I might have to market it as a community event and just invite shared information out to the high schools in town that they can provide to the parents and students to do it that way. Because everyone does their schedule a little bit differently with the virtual platform. So I think to get the best target is to just market it as a community presentation offer to to the school and the parents at a certain time. So everyone can log into one, one main link. So I do have a presenter that I've been working with. He presented prior to me is Dynamic Influence. And he does kind of like a magician type of platform in a fun, creative way to share the information about drug prevention. And he also has a family piece as well, too. So I'm just trying to coordinate the best way to roll out those presentations and then get some dates locked in and secure so we can get flyers out and get the information out and coordinate with the school as well. So those were all of the updates that were on the monthly report that went out for December of last year. Did anyone have any questions or?
I just have, just one quick question around the grand pals. What's the, it's great to, I like the writing of letters. That's really nice. We don't do that much anymore, the way we communicate, so that's great. What is, how many grand pals do we have actively engaged?
Currently, right now, for that one, we had five actively, five grand pals that were, that were participating in the pen pal section.
Okay.
So we have 25, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we won't. And that's something different. Like we actually had the kids handwrite the letters. I'm like, oh, no typing. They actually handwritten something short and sweet. Everyone had great penmanship, so. So I'm hoping, you know, we get some letters back within the next week or two so we can just keep it, be going to keep them engaged and type away and connected to the youth.
Nice. Thank you.
Angelica?
Yes.
Which, which group is writing the letter to the, to the grand pals?
That's the Project 330, the leadership group.
Okay. And how, how are we advertising some of the events that is offered to the youth in the community? I know I see things on Facebook because I like the, you know, the page. So I see it, and when I see it, I always share things, but I'm not sure how other people are getting the word.
We are using, we constant contact. We have our email list that we've been generating from people that has registered for our past, past program activities. We also use the Leisure Services email blast distribution. So we send that information out as well. There are some cases where we have to get, we have contacts with the school social workers. We'll send some flyers out that way. And also I've been sending out through, get approved through Krista Sheeran at the board to have the flyers approved and it gets put into the virtual backpacks at the school. So based on the ages that gets put into the school's virtual backpack. Our Facebook, we typically do post on Facebook or for some reason, our Facebook page hasn't been allowing us to get to log into it. But that's another platform that I like to use as well through the Facebook. But our Facebook has been down for a couple of months now. We just can't figure out what's, what's happening with our, our webpage so we can get information up there as well.
What about using the website? Sorry, go ahead, Carla.
No, the only reason why I asked that question is just to, because there's a lot of youth in, in Bloomfield, a lot of families. And I know sometimes we have this repeat of the same families, just. So I just want to make sure the world is getting out because a lot of children are at home and they could really use a lot of services. I mean, I have one in my house. So trust me when I say this.
And just to piggyback off of what Carla is saying, I've had parents to reach out to me and saying, oh, you mentioned such and such a program, but I looked on the website and I couldn't find it. So is there a way to put some of these flyers on the website? Because I think most parents, that would be their first route, that they would check the website to see what's been updated and what's available for the youth.
Yes, yep. So there's a way to get them up there. So I'll work with, well, about getting those posted on our town's webpage for our department.
And is Facebook the only social media platform that we're using? I couldn't remember. I know we talked about this before.
Currently, yes. I did create an Instagram, but I haven't like fully uploaded anything to it. So I think that might be another good one because I know a lot of the uses that platform as well. I just have to do some settings before I can post some stuff up on there.
Okay.
And Angelica, won't you do a TikTok video too? That might.
I know, I should.
Only if you star in it, Carla.
Oh, no. I, I, look, oh, no, no, no. My daughter would kill me if she saw me out there. For safety reasons.
Yeah. Life. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
If I can, I just wanted to commend Angelica and Tiffany and all of the youth services staff on their creativity in spite of the challenges, because it's been challenging.
I agree.
They really have been just moving forward and figuring out ways to engage the kids. And they've really been quite creative with revamping youth services and, and how we do programming. So kudos to you guys for all you're doing. Doing some great things.
There's been no lull in the services that we've provided through this. So that's been, that's been really nice. And I know it hasn't been easy for them to get kids engaged, but somehow you guys have done a nice job of continuing to.
Really have, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes it feels like we're moving in a circle to nowhere. But when I send out the monthly reports to you guys, I'm like, wow, we've actually done a lot. And we have a lot of mainstanding programs that we've been able to continue to run despite, you know, our little small shutdown in March that we had. But once we figured out a way to, they go on, we've been able to keep our foundational programs. And we're still looking for ways that we can add new, new programs on top of our existing programs as well, too, so.
Nice. Thank you. All right. We, are we at workshops for the youth and parents or?
I can, yes, let me just make sure. I'm just going to go over the Drug Prevention Assembly, just to make sure Hector has everything he needs to type in for the minutes.
Okay.
For the Courage to Speak Foundation, that's confirmed for February 11th. It'll be 7:45 a.m. to 8:45 that morning, Assembly Block at the Bloomfield High School. And then I just have to confirm with Malletti that, that date still works. But as of this, as of now, it's booked with the presenter and I've sent off the information to the school for that piece. Dynamic Influence is a drug prevention presenter. And they have different topics. So they have the options where we can pre-record, they have pre-recorded virtual trainings that goes over like different blocks where they have questions that you can answer and you get a certificate at the end. So they have some family workshops that we can purchase a pre-recorded videos. So I'm trying to do a parent, parent workshop. So I know parent schedules are very busy. So at least we can have the option to say, hey, we have a vaping prevention workshop is going to be streamed. Here's the link for it. They have so many days to watch the link. When we purchase it, you have 90 days that you have access to the link. And it's also a portal that the families can get information about drug prevention tips and resources. Once they log into that training, they have access to that portal for 90 days. So there's an additional platform that parents can find information as well. So I definitely want to get this out to, when we book this one, get this one out to the schools, the parents have that information to access as well, too. The other option they have is a virtual live streaming where the presenter will come on and do the virtual presentation. There'd be question and answer component that we can have as well. So I'm going to work with the presenter to see if we can do a combo package that will have a live streaming that will have a targeted date. And then we can do some pre-recorded video sessions so we can have those available as well. So that way, there's multiple ways that people are going to be able to get this information. So if they miss, let's say, the main date, they still have another access resource to get information on the topics. Let's see. Any questions about those drug prevention assemblies that we're trying to, and workshops?
Nope.
Okay. So the next section is the workshops for the youth and parents. There is an online platform called Peace at Home Parenting. So there's a variety of different parenting skills that parents can have access to these online portals. So I'm looking to get the online membership. So for a year, you get access to the videos. And there's, the parents can log in at any time. You just provide the link and they can log on to have those informational parenting sessions as well. And that thing, Peace on, Peace at Home Parenting, I think is founded by one of the universities, either UConn or Yale. They have these videos that's posted for the informational sessions. So I think that works well in conjunction with having a resource for parents for different topics that they can have access to.
Oh. Angelica, can I ask a quick question around that? So that really sort of helps me think about the foster care program. Would those foster parents be eligible to participate in that parenting information?
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes, yes, yep.
Because it sounds like a really good resource for them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, this will be open to all parents in our programs and the community as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm hoping, my goal behind this, I'm hoping to eventually have, um, a mini-parent series group that we can meet maybe once a month or quarterly, that we can have a platform for parents to connect in. You know, it can be a discussion of topics around, you know, what are some current issues they're having, what's in town, just to have another avenue for parents to kind of have that community, to build that network and community for the parents as well. Do you know if there's any existing, um, thing out there that you guys, as parents, are, know from your own children that is available out there? Like, is there any type of parent-community, um, network in town?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, I don't think I've... So maybe we can...
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm with Rochelle, as specific to Bloomfield, I'm not aware of any other groups.
So maybe this might be something we can just kind of have a pilot, and we can just have, start off with just the webinars, and then maybe have like a live stream and say we want to be having a live Zoom, Zoom, um, discussion on positive parenting tips, and we have the video, we have a little discussion about it. So maybe this might be a pilot to, um, the makings of a network probably.
Donna, does that, the foster parent group still meet?
I wish. You mean the support groups?
Yeah.
Everything's happening virtually right now, so I don't believe the groups themselves are happening. What I do know is that our support workers are regularly calling the foster homes. So they are calling them several times a month, I believe, for a little while, there was even weekly, um, that they're calling the foster parents, or a couple, in the beginning, it was a couple of times a week to check in on the foster parents on their caseloads. And so we continue to have foster care support workers doing that, but right now, we're not doing any in-person groups.
Right, and nor virtual.
Right, I can check, I know they've started some pre-licensing training to, uh, virtually, to start licensing folks that will become foster parents, hopefully. But, um, I'll double-check to see if they're doing any support groups anywhere virtually. They, they could be, but I'm just not aware of any that are happening in the region for, um, Manchester and Hartford.
Okay.
But I can let you know, or I can let you know if they plan on resuming, um, the support groups virtually, because I know the, there was a group meeting at the Leisure Center, right?
Right, monthly, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has there been any, do you know if there's been any communication with that support worker with, uh, your team?
I'm not sure, I don't even know, Angelica, if, um, you all have ever connected with that.
No, I don't, I haven't connected at all.
No, we haven't.
Okay, so what I could do is I can send an email to the manager, and then, um, include you guys in it, so that there's a way that you're connecting. So when we do, or if they are doing anything, there, it's a reminder to them that we do have this foster care program that we fund here in Bloomfield, and that there should be some interfacing, that we can do some connecting that way. So I'll remind myself and try to get an email out tonight. Angelica and Tiffany, the other two of you that I should put on there, Camilla, do you need to be on the email?
Um, no, not necessarily, you can, that's okay.
Okay, I'll do that tonight, um, after we're done.
Okay.
Okay. All right, where are we, so we're done, are we, twenty, twenty-one winter programs?
Okay, yes, so for our winter programs, what I'm trying to do is have our programs by different quarters, like, the next quarter would be our winter session from January through March. So what we have going on, we have the Sun Beams, they're actively recruiting for the next wave of group for that online piece. We have our Bloomfield Police and Youth Department, which is starting the February ninth, Tiffany.
Yes, February ninth is the first day, and that goes till May twenty-ninth.
And then we have our Project Three Thirty, we're gonna be sending that information out as well. That group is for our leadership group. We have our current six members, but we're gonna market it, just in case there's some members that aren't able to continue on with us. That will be, our next meeting is actually starting tomorrow, and this group will be going all the way through, um, May twenty-sixth, but I'll market it for each quarter, depending on how our membership is looking. If we lose some members, or if we, um, have a waitlist for that group as well. Our tribe group, that group is gonna start on January twenty-fifth, that's our leadership group. They're gonna be moving back into their in-person programming. Right now, they have their current five kids that they're working with, with the mentorship, and they're doing weekly checking calls with them to see how things are doing. So they're really focusing now on that mentorship piece, and so they meet in person, starting back on the twenty-fifth. Um, we have our life skills program that we're gonna be starting, remarketing to start back again. I know we had a, we weren't able to get that group up and going, but we're gonna start that group for the winter, and that will be offered to grades seven through twelfth, and it will focus on, um, young men and young girls with their life skills in terms of basic skills on money management. Um, it was basically, um, household, running your household in terms of laundry, cooking, budgeting, all of these different skills that they would need to help participate in their own household, and when they get out, they will have a skill set as well. So what I'm working on, I want to get out this week, is a one-pager that will have all of our programs that we offer for the winter, the ages, the contacts, and then we have that sheet that we can send through our email blast, and I'll make sure we get that posted on our website as well. And also in Constant Contact, what I can do is have that main sheet that has all of our programs, and then underneath, like a news, running newsletter, it will have the actual program flyer, like, gives a more detailed description of the program and how to contact. What we're doing is with all of our program flyers, we have a QR, QR code at the bottom, where you can scan, and it'll bring you automatically to our full application, um, so they can fill that out and send it back to the contact person on the list as well. So I should be getting that out this week to have posted to get recruiting for those programs that's coming up for the winter, winter session. And I'll be running from January through March, and then some are still gonna extend out beyond, beyond the winter session.
That's a lot.
Yes, I, I keep trying to remind myself not to add on too much, kind of, you know, when you have so much staff, and I want to make sure the quality that we're doing is, is how I, is to my levels of what I want it to be. So I'm like, all right, focus on quality, I get, I just get excited, I want to do everything, that I have to reel myself back in, and like, okay, we, we got this, we can always launch this a little bit later, and just work on the content of it and getting everything together, so we can roll it out nicely, so.
Sounds good.
And I did forget to mention, we do have our CAMHS After-School Program. We've been back and forth with the school, we have a meeting tomorrow, and there's another representative from the school that's gonna be on board on the meeting. In terms of, um, launching that program, we're still waiting on the school to finalize their application, so I can make one long application that we can have, that they can send out to the families to register, so that way we're getting all of our data that we need for our grant, and what they need for their registration piece as well. So we have an idea to have the Dream Chaser Academy as a leadership piece. They have an online platform that we'll be using, and then we'll be supplementing with Fun Friday activities, and we have some other parenting components that we plan on incorporating, and so that, we're just trying to get started. Because we, um, started late last year, um, and we started late again this year, so, with the funding. So we're just trying to get something going, so we can get the bar rolling. So I'm looking into some things that we can purchase early, so we can have it ready to go. So when we do get the kids enrolled, we have all those, some of the pieces already started. It's always harder, too, when we're working with, um, collaborating, when there's so many different peace departments. We have the school, and then we have leisure and our department. So whenever you coordinate with multiple providers, sometimes it just doesn't run smoothly all the time, because you're not the main one in charge, but we'll figure it out. So hopefully, we have, um, I'm hoping they have better news for us after the break, in terms of start dates, and if they have a list of kids that's already, um, in mind to easily register to enroll, because our start date was supposed to be in two weeks from today, so.
Okay. Do we, so, are you done with your reporting out on new business, is that?
Yes, yep, so, that was my last piece, yes.
All right, so, um, before we go into announcements, I do have a question. When I look, I don't see a town council member present. Um, have we been able to secure a rep?
We are, a way, I had a conversation with the mayor and the town manager. The mayor has to, uh, make an appointment, um, for a representative to, um, our, uh, committee. So she's aware of it, um, we actually had a Zoom meeting, and that was one of the topics we discussed. I know, um, one, um, town council member in particular has expressed interest, and that person did have a conversation with me, but it, the appointment has, anyone can attend, but have, um, uh, someone who's actually appointed as the representative from town council, it has to come from the mayor, so.
Okay, is the mayor aware of urgency of this? Because this has been a longstanding issue, we've been without a town council member.
For years.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did have that conversation.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. So hopefully, by next meeting, we'll have someone.
Okay, that would be nice, because this really is a disservice not having a town council rep present. Uh, we, we have some really good discussions, and we, I think we can move things a little bit further, and certainly, uh, it would be more of a fruitful discussion to have that person. And, and our bylaws speak to having a rep, right? I thought when we...
Right.
Okay, thank you, Camilla.
Okay.
All right, any announcements that anybody has?
Actually, I don't have an announcement, but I just had a quick question, if we could just go back for the, uh, Summer Youth Employment Program. Um, did we talk about the potential date for applications for summer employment as yet? I might have missed it.
I don't know, right now, um, they have, I'm waiting on Capital Workforce. Our last conversation I had with one of the contacts, we were supposed to be getting information next month, in terms of when the applications will be available, and when we're gonna start, um, some of the program as well. And as you mentioned, I forgot to share, there's a link that gave us some feedback data on our program participants' percentage rates that we had from last year. Um, I was sending it in a separate email, it shows over our stats, but we had a high percentage rate of, uh, participant enrollment and completion of the program. It was over, um, eighty percent, which I feel was great, considering our first time doing it, and getting the community involved, so, um, that was a program highlight, so I have to share that, um, specific link, and it also shows you the other towns and other providers, so you get to see how we match up with different, um, different districts in terms of percentage rates and having our youth engaged. So to see that we had a really high percentage for the first time, new program, virtual COVID, everything all at once, that was, that was extra motivation to say, okay, yes, this is a program that needs to stay. And, um, now it's just a matter of getting the program departments to, um, stay on board with the program. I know some of the departments, it was new and different for them to have a youth participant, and they are different, um... So we've been having COVID around for a while, so just figuring out how they can incorporate a youth in their department with this round that's happening. So I just want them to, um, be, to be open, you know, things weren't always perfect, but to be open, to be receptive, to take on another youth. So I'm gonna put together like another, um, interest survey for the departments, to see which departments are interested, so that way I can know how many departments will want to participate this summer. And we also are trying to figure out how we can get small businesses and town to participate as well. Because one of the goals of the grant is to have these youth hired on after they finish the program. The way the town is set up is, is not likely that we have positions ready, available for, for the youth to do beyond the internship, so if we can get at least a few, um, small businesses in different, um, industries, that would be awesome to have. The youth, because then that way, that can be kind of a sounding board, they can do almost like a, um, job training with them for free, because it's getting funded through the grant, and if they have an opening, they can hire that youth on as well to, um, participate. I'm just letting in, um, one participant.
Okay.
So that way, um, we can hire on kids, because the goal is to actually get them those job skills, and to hire them on after. So, um, I just have to figure out logistically with, um, HR in a town, what are our regulations with, um, having youth participate in non-town, um, facilities? So I have to figure out the legalities around that piece. But it is done through different towns, so just figuring out how they work that out with liabilities and all of that stuff to have, you know, you participate like at a Walgreens or a CVS or Stock and Shop, so.
Angelica, do you have some idea of, you just mentioned Walgreens, CVS, do you have some, or a list that you started to generate of, uh, community providers that we would tap into?
Um, I don't have a list, but I'm gonna put together one and kind of break it down into categories, like retail, um, um, service and different categories, that way, um, we have a variety of different, um, departments that the kids could potentially work in, so, um...
We, we also discussed, um, speaking with Chamber of Commerce, Vera Smith Winfrey's the director there. Um, and she actually used to, if some of you remember, did trainings, um, for, um, some of the summer programs that we had in preparing kids for employment, that was some time ago. Um, and there's also, um, through our planning and zoning department, the Economic Development, um, Committee, where there are some businesses that participate in that. So Jose Guiner, who's the director there, could be helpful in helping with facilitating some connections. But we just have to, before we even reach out, figure out the, the legal piece on our end, because the kids would be on our payroll, um, and under our liability. So, you know, the town is kind of cringing at the thought of that. So we'll have to figure out how other towns work that out, so we can do the same.
That would be great, that sounds really good, thank you. Uh, Angelica, another quick question, can we talk about, where are we with our budget?
So with our budget, let's see if I can pull it up. I thought about it in the beginning, to mention and figure out what, how are we gonna spend our funds for...
I don't think there's been any more spending since Blue Bash, right?
Spent about less than five hundred, so we should have almost twenty-five hundred.
I sponsored a couple of families for Christmas gifts.
That was about, I think, two fifty, I think it was one twenty-five per town, and then we had the trunk or treat stuff. And that's how that we spent so far a year to be.
Oh, okay.
But we have, um, to figure out how we wanna, you know, what area we're focused on for the, um, budget and what we wanna, um, allocate that to.
Okay.
Last year, a lot, a large chunk went towards the graduation for, um, twenty-twenty for the high school.
So can we, um, go ahead, Hector?
I was just gonna say, I would imagine that some of that money would go towards the, um, the program with, uh, BHS, correct? We would be funding that, or is that, is that being funded in another, by another grant of some sort?
Um, which, uh, which one are you referring to?
So I'm referring to the, the assembly, um...
Oh, the, uh, the Drug Prevention Assembly?
Correct.
We could do a workshop, that one is, um, actually a free, uh, free presentation.
Oh, wow, okay.
That's great.
Some, if we do some future ones, I haven't purchased the Dynamic Influence, I haven't used any funds for that one yet. You wanted to coordinate another assembly to target either the high school or middle school or parent assembly.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to, the middle school, I certainly is, we talked about...
I was gonna say, yeah, I, I'm... Gonna say, yeah, I've, I'm, in future meetings, we've talked, or excuse me, in future meetings, in past meetings, we've kind of talked about how a a lot of this stuff kind of originates surprisingly at that Carmen A-Race or at that, at that level. Um, even as low as like, and I hate saying this, fifth or sixth grade.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, I would definitely look to to possibly do something there. Uh, the other part of that is, you know, the parental involvement too, so maybe try put together some kind of workshop uh after hours. Uh, and I realize sometimes that becomes um a challenge, just because you have parents that work at different hours and everything, but um possibly use some of those dollars for um Carmen A-Race, yeah, as well as the parent side of it.
Yeah, I, I also have a quick question. If we don't use the funds, can it be like also the, the end of the year, can it be used towards scholarships? Five hundred dollars or if we don't use it for other programs?
Right.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a great question, Robert.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess I'm Yeah, I like that idea too, it's just figuring out how that will look on our side of the end. Like we market it early, like they send in the application. We have so many um, so many um dollar amounts that we can awa- award out, send it out, and that way we have a deadline that we receive in applications and um just figure out if we were able to do that, how the payment piece will work on our end.
Yeah, and I would just have to confirm that that's something we could do with town funds also.
Got it.
Yeah.
I know Dr. Mackey joined us. Um, Dr. Mackey, is there, is there a, apologize for calling you out on this one, but
No, it's fine.
There like a process that internally that goes, that's maybe recommended by the um school administration or something that maybe wouldn't involve in the application process, or something like that? And again, Camilla, I'm not trying to jump the gun on this one, I guess I'm just trying to make sure we have all the information on the table.
Yeah, I mean, equity is the biggest issue with that. Um I mean, I know a lot of scholarships do have um uh like socioeconomic status kind of um aspects to them, like, you know, to win this award, you have to, your house- household has to make less than X amount. Um, you know, this award is for single fam- fam- single moms, single fathers, this award is for foster kids. Um, there, they do have scholarships for that. Us being a school though, uh uh, yeah, I I think ours would just end up having to be just a very blanket kind of one. I mean, we could attach like an essay contest to it. We can attach um community service uh requirements, stuff like that, that gives everybody an equal chance. But to roll out a uh a school-sponsored scholarship contingent on anything other than in no, community involvement, I think would be very dicey, and I don't think that would, that would fly.
Yeah. The only reason I even ask about that, Angelica, just so, so you know, you're kind of on my, where I'm going with this one. The application process sometimes can take a little bit of time, um, and I don't know you know, hell, there's a lot of scholarships out there right now that are, that are, you know, deadlines have, have come and gone. Um, so to pull something together like that might become an issue with respect to timing. I am not opposed to it, to be honest with you, I, I actually think um offering some sort of scholarship to um the high school students in light of everything that's going on uh with respect to COVID, I thought would be a helpful piece there. But there is a ton of logistical questions that Camilla brought up um that I do have concerns with about whether or not we can do it, and then the second piece of that is, how do we make it so that we're not singling out? You know, or, or, you know, saying it's a socioeconomic thing, or it's a foster kid program, or something like that. Um, I'm sensitive to that piece of it, I wanna make sure we don't make it so that, oh, it's, it's a reward, but we're not calling them out, that's something that they may be sensitive to the fact. Uh, so, uh, just throwing it out there, seeing, you know, I I appreciate um also Wilkins kind of coming in and bringing that up, I actually think it's a, it's something we probably should do. The one last thing I would say is unfortunately, I don't think we'd be able to do it every single year, and I think it's kind of like one of these um COVID kind of things where we keep it in place until, you know, we can't do it again, and hopefully it wouldn't be next year, but obviously, we have the budget dollars, and I'd like to see it spent rather than than not.
Also, did, last year when we did the bags, um, did we help fund that, the, you know, the blankets for the graduates at the high school, you know, with the little tote bags with everything?
Yeah.
Okay, or so that's something we could, we could also agree to do again. I think what we need to do is I I think it's helpful for us, if Angelica, the next meeting, if you could have the exact um amount of what we have left over, and then we could have, add that as an agenda item.
Okay.
To talk about the budget, I mean, because it, next month is already gonna be February, and before, we're wrapping up meeting. Um, so if we could start to tackle that at the next meeting and see if there is some agreement around um what some of the spending will be, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other, any announcements, public comments? I don't think we have any guests today, I think we have all members, so.
Uh, Dr. Mackey did join, so I didn't know if he wanted to give us any kind of call out or or report out on the schools.
Uh, yeah, um, thank you for that. Um, on January nineteenth, uh, we'll be welcoming back uh our hybrid students. Um, right before Thanksgiving, uh we uh unfortunately had an uptick in, in cases. Um, not necessarily at the high school, but throughout the district, so beginning November thirtieth, we went all remote, and uh we've been teaching and learning remotely since then. The uh central office has determined that this, that January nineteenth is gonna be the re-entry date for the whole district, so uh, we're uh, we're not finalizing, but we're pretty close to uh just making sure that the logistics of bringing everybody back. Uh, not everybody, um, probably about, I would say maybe forty percent of our students coming back. Um, making sure our logistics in terms of, you know, our signage, uh, refreshing our support staff about their responsibilities. Um, and really, I think the biggest part is making sure that the teachers um are in a good place, you know, we, we balanced distance learning um with kids in the building, uh, but that was kind of a different schedule. And then when we went fully remote, we adopted a new schedule. And then now when the kids are coming back, we're gonna keep the schedule that we have now, except kids will be in front of us, except all digital. So uh I think a lot of my focus is gonna be making sure that uh teachers are mentally and physically prepared for that balance of having kids in the classroom while also teaching kids through the computer. Um, but we still have a couple of weeks left to uh to finalize those arrangements. And we're, we're, we're very excited at the high school, we're really looking forward to the kids coming back, even if it is about half of them. Uh, anything to make it feel more normal for us, anything especially to make it feel more normal for the kids um i- is welcome, so we're just excited about that. Uh, we have midterms coming up on the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. Uh, the quarter will end on Monday, January twenty-fifth. Uh, now that's just the quarter two, but it's also the semester, which means that for some students um, that class is done, they're gonna move on to an entirely different class with an entirely different schedule. So we're gonna be sensitive to those uh, to those transitions. Um, also providing professional support for teachers who uh, you know. I- i- it's hard enough to get to know a class, you know, a half-year class in person, to have them, you know. Most of those kids be distant is gonna be another challenge, so just a lot of professional learning about uh welcoming students in and providing that right kind of culture with a whole new class. Um, let's see, what else? Um, I don't know if anybody attended the Harlem Renaissance uh celebration that we had last month, that was a big success. Uh, towards the end of the month, Mr. White and his team are uh gonna be having another kind of game night sort of thing, uh based on uh Harlem Renaissance art artisans and musicians and things like that, so please look for that, uh, that information coming out soon. Um, but yeah, there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on at the high school, but uh, you know, i- it's uh, it's going well.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Mackey.
Absolutely, sir.
Uh, anything from the police?
Um, I mean, we've, we obviously are limited because of COVID, but we've been doing the police and youth. And that just finished in December, and then we're starting again next month, so.
Hello, did you say yeah?
So that's about it. Uh, we, we, from time to time, um, do a Zoom call with our explorers as well, but we have not met in person. But again, with COVID, we're just limited to what we could do.
Got it, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Hector, for.
Sorry, my wife was bothering me about dinner. I can't wait.
I just say, thank you for remembering to get those updates. Um, anyone else have anything to share?
I just wanted to let you know Roger did join the call a little bit later, he's um.
Do that, yeah.
I got him.
Okay, perfect. Okay, anything else? Well, we're early tonight, nice. Nothing? All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we uh end tonight's meeting.
There we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Roger, how are you?
Fine, sorry, I uh, it's been such a wonderful time these days, I just can't keep track of it all. But I, I, I really sorry that I missed the meeting, because you know, I always like to Hector, Hector.
I was quiet this time, Roger, I think you're